The school director's daughter and the school beauty made a bet. Who could conquer me, a poor student, first? They pretended to be affectionate and launched a massive pursuit of me. When I completely fell for them and gave them my first kiss and my true love, they cruelly revealed the truth. Except for you, the whole school knows about this strategy live broadcast. A country bumpkin, do you really think a rich girl would like you? I was like a drowned dog, being mocked and ostracized by all the teachers and students in the school. In a trance, I accidentally fell into the water and died tragically. When I opened my eyes again, I was back to the day when the strategy live broadcast began. After school, I was stuck at the corner of the stairs. Emily, the daughter of the school director, looked at me with her chin up, her eyes amused, a top student in Guan ta. I heard that you ranked first in the grade again in this monthly exam. Emily is the only daughter of the Yen family in the capital and grew up with a silver spoon in her mouth. As the largest sponsor of the E news Academy of Nobles, the Yen family is thriving in the business world and their two generations ago even have some red background. In my previous life, Emily asked me to help her cheat on the monthly exam, but I refused. Later, she got a total score of double digits and was scolded by Yin's mother. Emily blamed it all on me. So Emily came up with a prank. She made a bet with her good friend, the school beauty Sophia, on who could win over me, a poor student, first. Sophia obtained the school surveillance rights and broadcast the entire strategy live on the campus forum. To spice things up, Emily even started a school-wide voting game, betting on when I would give my first kiss to one of them. In the end, all the rewards for this live broadcast will go to the person who guessed the most accurately. Emily, the school board's daughter who was born with a sense of destiny, Sophia, the cool and beautiful school beauty, and a huge reward pool, this live broadcast set E news college on fire. After all, I was just a high school boy with little experience in the world. How could I resist the overwhelming romantic pursuit of two rich girls? After I agreed to Sophia's confession, Emily, who lost the bet, was furious. She cruelly revealed the truth to me. You never imagined it, did you? This is a love strategy show, and it's being broadcast live. He's an A student. I think he's a narcissist, right? You don't really think we like a country bumpkin like you, do you? From then on, I became the biggest joke in the school. In their eyes, my early coldness and rejection was a lack of understanding of romance, my softening attitude in the middle stage was pretentious, and my later spring of love was self-degrading and wishful thinking. Everyone was laughing at my stupidity. My grades plummeted and I fell out of the top fifty in the final exam. My scholarship was revoked and my family was left in debt. My parents died in a car accident on their way to work to raise tuition. After many blows, I fell into the swimming pool in a trance and drowned silently in the winter of my second year of high school. Afterwards, the school attributed my death to study pressure, punished me by drinking a cup of wine, and then quietly let it go. Emily was shocked and sent abroad. Later, she lived a life of drunkenness and had many boyfriends around her. I just heard that every one of her boyfriends had features that were somewhat similar to mine. Sophia inherited the company when she became an adult and became a well-known philanthropic female entrepreneur because of her many donations to poor mountainous areas. She eventually married a first-generation wealthy man from a rural background. At the wedding, she gazed at the groom tenderly and said that he made her feel back to the feeling of first love when she was with her childhood sweetheart. Hey, Jack, are you not listening to me? Emily waved her hand in front of my eyes. Her bright almond eyes seemed to be able to see into people's hearts, and when she stared at people, she was easily reminiscent of a female leopard. I know, the Raiders livestream has already begun. The comments on the campus forum were flying. What kind of shit luck does this top student have? The school director's daughter and the school beauty are chasing him together? I bet my weekly allowance, this time I won the hunt for the school beauty, who can resist the cool goddess? Then I bet on the unruly little princess of the Yen family. I liked Sundra, hee hee. Emily took a deep breath and repeated patiently. I told you, I came here this time to give you a chance to make money. I heard that your family is from the countryside. You must be short of money, right? Come to my house and give me tutoring. One thousand per lesson, how about that? I glanced at the camera at the corner of the stairs inconspicuously, then lowered my head and said, Thank you for your kindness, Emily, but I have plans for the weekend. Weekend. I walked out of the school gate. When I passed by the mirror, I paused and looked at myself in the mirror. He is thin and reserved, with pale skin, and his face even looks a little dull because of the lack of expression. The biggest advantage of my facial features is my eyes behind the black-framed glasses. Of course, I could take off my glasses now and change some of the public opinion. But how can proactive change be as impressive as letting them discover it themselves? I knew that even if I didn't fall for it this time, Emily and the others would come up with new pranks to play on me. With my current abilities, it is impossible for me to fight against two celestial dragons who can cover the sky with one hand. But at least in this life, I have figured out their ways. Isn't it just acting? Just act, who can't do that? I lowered my eyes and walked towards the flower shop where I usually worked. Most of the students at E news college are either rich or noble. In order to maintain its good reputation, the school admits several outstanding students every year. In addition to having good grades, another characteristic of excellent students is that they are poor. If they were not poor, they would not attend an aristocratic school that is out of place just for a scholarship. As long as I stay in the top ten in my grade, not only will my tuition be waived, I will also receive a scholarship of five thousand yuan per month. Since I entered school, I have never ranked other than first in the exams. So I used to send my scholarship money back home and work part-time to earn my living expenses. Flower shop. Before I even entered the door, I heard Aunt Chen's excited voice. Jack, a big order came in today. On her mobile phone screen, there was a delivery order, nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine Freud roses. The owner of the order also specifically specified that the flowers must be top quality from Ecuador. Aunt Chen's face lit up. This order can earn at least five figures. In my previous life, Emily easily ruined my part-time job at the flower shop in order to force me to agree to give her extra lessons. She spent a fortune and ordered a large number of Floyd roses. Aunt Chun and I ran all over the city overnight and collected enough flowers, but all we got was Emily's casual words. It's boring. I don't want them anymore. The Yen family was extremely powerful, and Aunt Chun had no place to complain, so she had to bear the huge loss of the final payment. She opened the shop here to escape her abusive husband. After this incident, she closed the flower shop and had no choice but to return to her hometown with her husband. Seeing that I was in a low mood, Aunt Chen was a little confused. Jack, what's wrong? I shook my head. Aunt Chun, this order is not right. Don't prepare the flowers yet. Although Aunt Chun was hesitant, she temporarily gave up the idea of purchasing in large quantities due to my insistence and agreed to delay for a while and see. In the following week, I no longer went to the library to study, but hid in the dormitory after class, making it impossible for Emily to see me. The progress was so worrying right after the strategy started, the eldest daughter of the Yen family became visibly annoyed. As I expected, within a week, she couldn't sit still anymore. On Saturday, Aunt Chen took a nap in the storage room, leaving me alone to look after the store. I had just finished writing a paper when I looked up and saw a familiar petite figure flash past the door of the flower shop. I immediately realized that the time had come. At the same time, Aunt Chen's cellphone on the cash register vibrated. I picked up the phone without hesitation. Less than ten minutes later, a bald man with a beer belly rushed into the flower shop aggressively. Bang. He kicked the door open and asked in a gruff voice, where is that bitch Chun Yan? Aunt Chun was woken up and walked out of the storage room with sleepy eyes. As soon as she saw the man, she immediately showed fear. You? Why are you here? The bald man snorted coldly and walked forward to pull Aunt Chen's hair. I hurriedly stopped Aunt Chun and asked loudly, who are you? What are you doing? The bald man sneered, who am I? I'm her man. It's only natural for a man to beat his own woman. If you don't get out of the way, I'll beat you up too. I said loudly with a trembling voice, domestic violence is against the law. If you don't leave, I'm calling the police. The bald man grinned and waved his hand, pushing me to the ground. I fell in front of the flower shop in a mess, and my glasses flew out. My knee hit the door sill, and I curled up in pain. I lowered my eyelashes, but a barely perceptible smile appeared at the corner of my mouth. I have no mistake, the figure outside the flower shop just now was none other than Emily. I know, Emily's live camera is pinned to her collar. That thing is high-end, and both the picture quality and sound quality are top-notch in the industry. The noise just now was so loud that both Emily and the students in the live broadcast room must have seen Aunt Chun and I being bullied. I know Emily too well. As the daughter of the Yen family, she has always been reckless and lawless. She has been lively and active since she was a child, and is stronger than ordinary girls. With the Yen family's unlimited pampering, she even became the female bully of E news college. Whether it was for strategy or out of her impulsive and violent instincts, she would definitely stand up. This cliche drama of bravery has come to this point. Next, the heroine came on stage. Sure enough, the next second, I saw someone step over the threshold and walk into the flower shop. Before anyone could react, Emily was already wrestling with the bald man. The comments on the forum have gone crazy. Ah, she just went up like that. Is there anyone who doesn't know that the little princess of the Yen family is a ninth-degree black belt? I'm so surprised. Awesome. The prize pool for live broadcast rewards has soared to one point seven four million and is still rising. The final winner is blessed. Although Emily had learned karate, the bald man was tall, fat, and his body was almost twice as thick as hers. At first, Emily used her fighting skills to temporarily gain the upper hand. But later, the bald man used his absolute weight advantage, seized a flaw, and pressed Emily under him. In the messy flower shop, a bald man with bloodshot eyes pressed on Emily and strangled her neck tightly. He pouted at Emily and cursed, you bitch, I'll give you trouble. Emily's little face was pinched red, but she was still struggling hard. Just before she was about to suffocate, I picked up a glass vase and smashed it hard on the back of the bald man's head. Bang. The bald man paused, then fell down with a bang. Emily took a few breaths, then gathered her strength and kicked the huge, fat body away. She sat up with an annoyed look on her face, and when she saw the scene in front of her, her eyes suddenly widened. My backlit silhouette was reflected in Emily's amber eyes, a handsome boy holding a vase, breathing heavily, covered in wounds but still holding on. You. As soon as she opened her mouth, the vase slipped out of my hand and rolled to the ground with a crisp sound. I couldn't support my injured legs any longer and fell down exhausted. Emily subconsciously leaned over and hugged me. As we hugged each other, I could hear her heartbeat like a drum in her chest. The suspension bridge effect refers to the fact that when people experience stimulating situations that cause their heart rate to accelerate, they may mistakenly attribute this physiological reaction to love. The scene just now was the one I carefully designed for Emily. The impulsive and proud girl wanted to save someone from danger and was saved by someone by accident at the last moment. I have rehearsed every expression and every movement in my mind ten thousand times. Listening to her rapid heartbeat, I trembled with excitement. Emily was at a loss as to what to do, holding my shoulders and said softly in a rare and awkward voice, Guang, just now, thank you. The bald man, Aunt Chen's husband, was taken to the police station for intentional injury. Although the sentences for domestic violence have always been light, it was Emily who was hurt this time. Considering the vengeful nature of the little princess of the Yen family, the bald man probably won't be able to get out for a while. Aunt Chen thanked Emily profusely and kept praising her as a modern young person. As the daughter of a school director, Emily has always been a troublemaker since she was young. How could she have been praised for being brave and righteous? She touched the scratch on her nose, but two suspicious blushes appeared on her cheeks. It's okay, I just came to see Jack. I didn't expect to encounter such a thing. No need to thank me, it's just a matter of convenience. To thank Emily, I offered to give her tutoring on the weekends. She was obviously very proud, but she still raised her chin and pretended to be proud. Come to my private villa next Saturday at three P M. Also, don't wear those broken glasses of yours. They look ugly. On the weekend, Emily studied in her private villa. I'm tutoring her in math. In my previous life, I had just agreed to tutor Emily when I discovered the truth behind the closure of the flower shop. I had a big fight with her and the tutoring session ended on bad terms. And in this life, I am going to take tutoring seriously. After solving a few math problems, the eldest daughter of the Yen family's eyes became clear. Seeing her biting the pen and staring at the first fill-in-the-blank question, I sighed silently. The comments began to gloat over the misfortune. The school director's daughter must be regretting taking extra lessons. It's her own fault. Ha ha. It's embarrassing to watch. She tried to flirt with the top student several times, but he was completely unmoved and focused on the questions. Am I the only one who thinks Jack speaks well? He explains things in simple terms, and even I, a math idiot, can understand what he says. At the same time, I noticed the old butler holding up his mobile phone and filming through the crack in the door. Although the old butler tried his best to lower his voice, he was still hardly excited. Mister and Mrs. Guang, God has opened his eyes. The young lady has actually started to learn math. I. Seeing that Emily was already daydreaming and about to fall into a sweet baby-like sleep for the third time, I said helplessly, let's stop here for today. Emily subconsciously agreed with the three consecutive words, oh, oh, so that's how it is. I understand. No get out of class is over already? I nodded, your foundation is too weak. It's better to proceed step by step. Emily nodded with relief, her face full of joy for surviving the disaster. Before leaving, I took out a Freud rose from my bag. Emily was stunned when she saw the rose in front of her. You are giving me flowers? I nodded without hesitation, yes. A customer of the flower shop canceled the order and paid a large sum of liquidated damages. I used the bonus from Aunt Chun to buy you a flower. Thank you for helping us. Seeing Emily's complicated expression, I raised my eyebrows and said, forget it if you don't want it. Emily immediately snatched the flowers from my hand. She blushed, who said I don't want it? When I walked out of the villa, the sun was setting. In the afterglow of the setting sun, a figure was riding a horse, galloping on the horse farm outside the villa. Seeing me come out, Sophia pulled the reins and rode up to me. She has outstanding looks, and the neat white riding suit makes her look even more elegant and graceful. The Bai family is not as prominent as the Yen family and can only be regarded as a technological upstart. But Sophia is gentle and polite, and she knows when to act and when to retreat, and all the teachers and students in the school have a good opinion of her. In my previous life, I was deceived by her disguise and agreed to her confession. When Emily told me that this was just a strategy, I didn't want to believe it, until Sophia admitted it herself. Facing my questioning, Sophia still smiled gently, but the words she said were extremely hurtful. Guang, Jack, I just realized that you actually look a lot like my childhood sweetheart. But he is pure and well-behaved, not as cheap as you. So what if you always rank first in the class? You are just a low-class person who is good at playing tricks. If Emily is innocently cruel, then Sophia is pure malice. At this moment, under the sunset, Sophia on the horse was looking at me with her eyes downcast. Thank you very much for coming to give Emily tutoring. From now on, I'll have to ask you to take care of her more. I looked up and looked straight into her beautiful eyes. Are you trying to say that Emily has a bad temper and is difficult to get along with, so I have to bear with her more? Sophia was stunned, then quickly laughed. That's not what I meant. At the same time, the big chestnut horse suddenly snorted, lowered its head, and rubbed my palm affectionately. Sophia looked surprised, Canton Andrew was a Hanoverian warm-blood with a bad temper. I've never seen it get so close to a stranger before. It really likes you. I sneered in my heart. Hanoverian horses are known for being calm and docile, so how could they have a bad temper? Of course, I understand the meaning of this lie. A straight ball like Emily's that rushes in and out easily makes people wary. And Sophia is a smart hunter. In my previous life, she chose to use unintentional coincidences to lower my guard first, and then through repeated exposure and contact, she gradually deepened my affection for him, and finally made me take the initiative to give her my first kiss. Seeing that I had no reaction, Sophia leaned forward slightly and stretched out her hand wrapped in a white leather glove towards me. Jack, do you want to go horseback riding together? The beautiful sunset, the pretty girl, the perfect atmosphere. Sophia was sure I would not refuse. But she miscalculated. In my previous life, Sophia used the suspension bridge effect when riding a horse to make me feel attracted to her, and I started to pursue her from then on. Now, I glanced at the hand he stretched out in front of me and suddenly asked, what is that? Sophia's rhythm was disrupted repeatedly, and a hint of impatience flashed in her eyes. She withdrew her hand, followed my gaze, took off a brooch decorated with black irises, and handed it to me. I stared at the black brooch. I know that Sophia's live camera is hidden in it. Not only does she have many methods and a high level of skill, but she also has a strong mentality. She actually dared to hand it directly to me. The barrage was trembling. Why do I feel like he is looking at me through the camera? Scared dot J P G. No way, Bai's camera equipment is the most advanced, and the live broadcast forum has also blocked him. So exciting, let's have a carnival. Seeing me staring at the iris brooch, Sophia said nonchalantly, do you like it? If you like, I can give it to you. I looked away and smiled abruptly, Guang, no need. I don't like the flower language of black irises. Sophia insisted on driving me back to school. In fact, the villa is not far from the school, only a ten-minute drive. The trouble is, there is no direct bus from here to the school. Looking at the girl sitting in the Lamborghini Revueled sports car, I said with some embarrassment, you are not yet an adult. Sophia smiled and took out a driver's license and shook it. Guang, don't worry, I passed the test abroad. Well, Jack, the top student in the grade, I wonder if I would be honored to give you a ride? On the way back, I kept memorizing words silently. At this time, the live broadcast barrage was also very lively. Ah, the cool school beauty is so beautiful. Poor students are also uneducated. Maybe he's just pretending to be noble and playing hard to get? Isn't that how idol dramas are played? No, am I the only one who noticed the amazing sound of this supercar? Top sports car, fast as lightning. After a while, the car stopped in front of the school gate. I tried to open the door and get out, but found it was locked. I frowned and looked at Sophia in the driver's seat, and she asked jokingly, Jack, how are you going to pay for the fare? I took out two crumpled hundred-dollar bills from my bag and handed them to her with a painful look on my face. No need to give me the change. Sophia smiled and said, you are very sincere, but unfortunately, I don't need money. She and I stood in silence for a few seconds. Suddenly, I tilted my head slightly and asked in a daze, have we met somewhere before? Sophia, I just realized that you actually look a lot like my childhood sweetheart. The barrage was full of boos. What an old-fashioned pick-up line. He doesn't think that this will make the school beauty look at him differently, right? I think he's obsessed with idol dramas. Has no one noticed that the school beauty hasn't spoken for a long time? Sophia looked at me with a hint of hesitation. I added with a smile, but she is pure and well-behaved. I wouldn't be so rude as to lock my classmates in the car like you. After getting off the bus, I stood next to the car and stuffed the two hundred yuan into the rolled-down window with a smile. As I watched the angry steel behemoth roar away, the smile on my face gradually faded. In her previous life, Sophia said at the wedding that the groom, whose smile was similar to mine, reminded her of her childhood sweetheart, her first love. Sophia and I came from very different backgrounds, so it was impossible for us to be childhood sweethearts. So there is only one possibility. Sophia had a childhood sweetheart, and I happen to look exactly like him. Since I knew this in advance, there was no reason for me not to take advantage of it. So I took on the title of her childhood sweetheart. Sophia is thoughtful, suspicious, and thoughtful. With this kind of person, you only need to throw out a vague question and they will take the time to find the answer, and in the process, she will inevitably get to know me and understand me. Repeated exposure can increase people's liking for someone, which is called the repeated exposure effect in psychology. This is the reason why love grows over time. By the way, I have to thank Sophia from my previous life for teaching me so many skills. The next few months were calm. Every day I go between the classroom, library, and cafeteria. On weekends, I first work part-time at a flower shop and then go to tutor Emily. Every time I go to see Emily, I bring a Freud rose. Emily went from being awkward to gradually getting used to it. I did not teach her perfunctorily because of what happened in my previous life. Instead, I patiently and carefully sorted out the knowledge for her. In my previous life, I was criticized for refusing to give Emily extra lessons. People from the countryside are just weird and not sincere at all. Some people even slandered me that my previous grades were obtained by cheating after my grades dropped due to depression. And this time, I won't leave any handle. The weather gradually turned cooler, and in a blink of an eye, it was winter with short days and long nights. The first semester of the second year of high school is about to end, and the final exams are just around the corner. Weekend. Private villa. Emily sat at the desk with a rare look of anxiety on her face. How is it? I put down the red pen I was using to mark the test papers. You scored sixty-three points on this math test. That's an improvement. Past. The old butler who had been prepared cheered and then fired a small salute that he had gotten from somewhere. Bang. Amid the fireworks and streamers, Emily pulled me up from the chair, held my hand, and started spinning around like a waltz. I was shocked and a little regretful that I didn't remind her that the full score was one hundred and fifty. Seeing this, the old butler quietly retreated and closed the door considerably. I was dizzy from the spinning and tapped Emily's head lightly. Guang, stop it. One more turn, and there will be no more flowers for today. Hearing this, Emily stuck out her tongue, stopped her movements, and started to act cute. I was wrong. I shouldn't tease you. I won't do it again next time. Where are my flowers? Reward me now. I raised an eyebrow at her and handed her the rose. Emily took the flowers and smiled wickedly. I was just kidding you. I'll do it again next time. I. As the end of the semester approaches, I become busier and busier. Library. I was reviewing my classes for next semester when someone nudged my shoulder. When I looked up, I saw a round-faced boy with a crew cut. He blushed and handed me a pink envelope. He said, Jack, can you help me deliver this letter to Sophia? I frowned and didn't answer. This boy's name is Leon. Like me, he is also an outstanding student who was admitted based on his academic performance. In his previous life, he was one of the few classmates who did not participate in the live broadcast of the strategy guide throughout the entire process. After I died, he learned the truth and wrote a letter of denunciation on my behalf. Unfortunately, the letter was intercepted by the Bai family as soon as it was sent, and it didn't cause any splash at all. Seeing that I was silent, Leon quickly explained. Every weekend when you went to cram school, it was your classmate Sophia who would take you back. So I wanted to trouble you. I simply refused. Sorry, I can't help you. Leon was stunned for a moment, looking puzzled. Why? Do you like goddess Sophia too? As soon as these words were spoken, the surroundings suddenly became silent. Some brave classmates began to steal glances in my direction. I glanced at the cameras on the ceiling not far away, then shook my head at Leon. No way. Leon is straightforward and kind-hearted, and he is definitely no match for the scheming Sophia. I don't want him to repeat the mistakes I made in my previous life, but I can't tell him the truth due to the ubiquitous live cameras. I can only hope that he will give up. Leon stomped his feet and forced the pink envelope into my hand. If you don't like Sophia, please help me. Thank you, Jack. Watching him running away, I clenched the love letter in my hand with an expressionless face. After the love letter incident, Emily's attitude towards me suddenly turned cold. Normally, she would send me hundreds of messages a day, math problems, emoticons, and even some meaningless chatter. And now, Emily has been silent for a week. I was under a lot of academic pressure and was happy to have some quiet time, so naturally, I thought of taking the initiative to look for her. If I could see the live broadcast barrage, I would find that the audience has already started lighting candles for me. I feel like this couple is going to be, but unfortunately, I just got nine rockets. The school director's daughter really cares about that love letter. Don't wash it. On the one hand, you send flowers to the school director's daughter, and on the other hand, you get jealous and throw away the love letters that others send to the school beauty. Isn't this too timing? What a pity. I was a bit of a fan of them. Saturday afternoon. I arrived at the door of Emily's villa on time. After pressing the doorbell, no one came to open the door for a long time. I took out my phone to send a message to Emily, but I saw a red exclamation mark indicating that I had been blocked. I frowned and rang the doorbell again. Ten minutes passed, and still no one came to open the door. Although I am not very knowledgeable or interesting, I understand that this means I am not welcome. I turned and was about to leave, but suddenly I heard the sound of a door opening behind me. Come in. A cold female voice. I walked into the villa and saw Emily lazily leaning on the sofa in the living room, operating the game controller absentmindedly. I was left hanging. After the game was over, Emily finally looked at me with mercy. Guang still remembered to come find me? I thought you were never going to ask me for an explanation. Ten. I was a little confused. What do you want to explain? Let me teach you a lesson. Make up lessons? Emily sneered, we haven't talked for so long. I thought the college bully had forgotten to make up lessons for me. She threw the handle down, stood up, grabbed my wrist, and dragged me roughly towards the study on the second floor. We pushed and shoved our way into the study, and Emily slammed the door. I staggered a few steps, and before I could even open my mouth, Emily pushed me hard to the desk. I was in a mess, looking awkward, with my lower back against the edge of the desk, and I suddenly became angry. But Emily didn't hold back at all. She put her arms on the tabletop on either side of me and leaned in close to me. I was pushed back by her, feeling very annoyed. Emily, what are you thinking? But the next second, Emily raised her hand, pinched my chin, and kissed me unreasonably. I was startled and slapped him subconsciously. Ha. The crisp sound of slapping fell, and the study returned to silence. Emily slowly turned her face away, tears of disbelief gleaming in her eyes. She questioned word by word, Jack, tell me, why did you throw away the love letter to Meow Meow? I took a deep breath. Emily, our relationship is simply an employment one. I give you extra lessons, and you spend money to buy my time and knowledge. I have no obligation to explain anything to you except math problems. Emily looked at me for a long time, then suddenly sneered. Wide employment relationship? Every time you come here, you bring me a Freud rose. Is this an employment relationship? I looked her straight in the eye. As you wished, I didn't bring you flowers this time. Emily narrowed her eyes, what? I didn't explain, but just repeated, this time, I didn't bring you flowers. Emily, the flowers are just a bonus. Since you don't want it, then you won't have it this time, and you won't have it in the future. What I mean is that you don't need to ask me for extra lessons anymore. Emily didn't give up. She stared at me, trying to find any trace of anger on my face. After noticing that my expression remained calm, she finally sneered. So in the end, you've always been just doing it for the money. Guang, it turns out that you can buy everything that belongs to you, Jack, with money, right? That's great. I have plenty of money. You top students may not be worth as much as the carefully raised horses in my manor stable. Ha. I used all my strength in this slap. Emily was raised by her family and was a little princess who could call the shots at school, when had she ever been slapped twice in the face by someone? She lowered her head, her hair was messy, and her lower lip was bitten white. She was obviously on the verge of a rage. Just when the atmosphere was about to break out, there were two knocks on the study door, and then it was opened from the outside. The old butler, with a face covered in cold sweat, held a plate of cut fruit and spoke tremblingly. Ms. Guang, Mr. Jiang, how about some fruit? I pushed Emily away, picked up my schoolbag from the ground, and walked out. As I walked out of the study, I heard Emily's shrill, threatening voice behind me. Jack, don't regret it when you leave this room today. I paused for just a moment, then strode away. As I walked down the stairs, I heard a loud noise coming from the second floor, as tables and chairs were kicked over. At the same time, the barrage is spreading faster than the spread. The plot just now was so earthy but so addictive. Scare the rat. Jack was really brave just now. Those two slaps were so loud. Ayah, I bet they would kiss today, my million-dollar prize awe. Damn it, I don't have class today. Can I still go there? I even set an alarm. The entrance of the villa. Sophia was leaning against the door frame, looking at me with smiling eyes. Guang, what happened? Did you have a fight with Emily? I told you a long time ago, you should be more considerate of her. Her collar was bare, no black flirty lease brooch that concealed the camera. I was about to ignore her gloating, but Sophia reached out to stop me. She suddenly asked, Guang, don't you have a pure and well-behaved childhood sweetheart? Why do you want to provoke others? Boys who are indecisive will be punished. At this moment, I finally noticed the unusualness of her tone, and a guess suddenly came to my mind. I stared at her, Leon's love letter, was it you who arranged it? You guessed it right. Sophia clapped her hands softly, her eyes sparkling with surprise. She looked excited, as if she was playing the most interesting game in the world. I know that boy likes me. I asked someone to hint to him that he could send the love letter to me through you. That's easy. After all, you're the top student who gets along best with us, right? I almost laughed out of anger. So what is your purpose? Just to make Emily hate me? At this moment, Sophia was tilting her head, slowly playing with the ruby ring on her hand. I want you to tell me all the stories about you and your childhood sweetheart. For example, is it because of her that you came to E news academy? She's forcing me to prove my identity. My expression remained unchanged. I am in a bad mood today and don't want to answer. Please bear with me. Sophia smiled softly again, that's great. But I believe that one day, you will beg me on your knees to tell me the answer. On the campus forum, Sophia's live broadcast remained black, and everyone gathered at Emily's live broadcast. Technology is advanced, it's good. I can actually watch a proud little princess destroying my house live in my lifetime. Be brave to speak up. I really don't understand why so many people lick the princess of the Yen family. My Sami yet is more humane than her. It's better to be B. A poor student like Jack wants to get rich overnight by getting married, the Yen family won't agree. A poor student like Jack wants to get rich overnight by getting married, the Yeen family won't agree. Don't spread rumors in front of me. The master and his wife like Xiao Jiang very much. Everyone was shocked at how angry Emily was, and they sighed and ridiculed me. They guessed that this live hunting show would soon come to an end because of Emily's disgust with me. At this time, I had just returned to the dormitory. I calmed myself down, opened my preparation notes again, and forced myself to continue studying. A new week. Emily and I continued to have a cold war. I am the disciplined committee member on duty this week, responsible for organizing the swimming test this semester. After the test, I was about to close the door of the swimming pool when I suddenly heard a burst of laughter coming from inside. I hesitated for a moment and reopened the door. In the swimming pool, several students gathered by the swimming pool. There were both men and women among them, but all of them were dressed exquisitely. Obviously, they were either rich or noble. In the swimming pool, the round-faced boy was trembling as he dived into the water again and again, as if he was looking for something. On the shore, the leading boy sneered. Leon, hurry up and fish it out. The market value of my watch is several million. If you can't get it, you'll have to pay for it. Because the swimming test has ended, the heating process of the indoor heated swimming pool has been stopped. In the ice water, Leon hugged his arms, his face pale. Chris, I'm sorry. I'm not. Chris interrupted her with a sneer. Just fish it out if Guang tells you to. Aren't you trying your best to get close to goddess Meow Meow? Since you like being a bootlicker so much, I will give you a chance. It's almost an open secret that Chris likes Sophia. It's not surprising that he got angry at Leon. Leon had no choice but to dive into the freezing water again, hoping that if he could fish out the watch, the group of people would let him go. Watching this scene, I clenched my fists. This academy is full of young masters and young ladies who are not to be messed with. They can decide the future of other students and even teachers at will. Maybe at this point, I should just turn around and leave. After all, Leon has nothing to do with me. I couldn't protect myself, so I helped him block the love letter, which was the most I could do. But looking at Leon's face that was frozen purple, I was reminded of the scene before my death in my previous life. At that time, my scholarship was canceled and I owed fees on my school card. A penny can make a hero fall. No one was willing to lend me money, so I had to work outside the school frequently and rely on two steamed buns every day to fill my stomach. That day, after barely completing the swimming test, I received a call and learned the news of my parents' death. I hid in the locker room and cried until I lost my voice for the first time. While crying, I told myself to hold on. Even if fate plays tricks on me, even if the rain of arrows shot at me by suffering is enough to block out the sunlight, I will continue to fight in the shadow. I will not surrender, I will live. When I was leaving the swimming pool, I suddenly saw a shining coin by the pool. I turned back to pick it up, but slipped and fell into the winter swimming pool. Although I am an excellent swimmer, I was hungry, cold, and exhausted at that moment. In the last moment before drowning, I was still struggling desperately to reach out my hands towards the water, hoping for a glimmer of hope. At this moment, Leon was still diving to retrieve his watch. I took out my phone expressionlessly and sent Sophia my location. The other party quickly replied. Ah, are you ready to kneel down and beg me? I ignored it and put my phone on a chair nearby, then raised my voice to the group of people by the pool. If you want to fish something out, you can ask the pool manager to drain the water. There's no need to torment me like this. Thirteen. To drain the water, you have to get the people in the water out first. Leon had just climbed out of the pool when Chris suddenly pointed his finger at me and said, "Hold him down." Several thugs immediately came over, handcuffed my hands behind my back, and pushed me in front of Chris. I knew I couldn't resist, and all I could do was delay time, so I didn't struggle anymore. Chris grabbed the back of my hair and forced my head up. He looked at him for a moment, then sneered. Guang isn't that handsome after all. You are a poor student, and you have offended someone you can't afford to offend. Where do you get the courage to uphold justice for others? Someone came up to smooth things over. No need, no need. Hitting him will only dirty brother Hou's hands. Chris agrees. Then he turned to Leon. Leon, come here now and slap him twice. The matter of the watch is written off. Leon looked at him in shock, his mouth open, unable to respond. W what? I squinted my eyes in disbelief at hearing such a disgusting trick. Chris was even more excited. He added, "If you can beat him till he cries, beat him till he cries for his parents. From now on, we won't bother you anymore at school." Leon was pushed in front of me. He was shaking like a sieve, even more violently than when he was soaking in the ice water just now. Our eyes met. Then, I heard his crying voice. Jack? Yes, I'm sorry. Huh. Then, a slap landed on my face. Chris laughed out loud. Guang also got a slap in the face. Don't play tricks, hit me hard. Huh. Another slap. I was hit so hard that my head tilted to the side and my new glasses fell to the ground. Chris looked at me with a stern look and said with regret. What can I do? He didn't cry. He tilted his head and smiled at Leon again. Guang will give you another chance. Push him into the pool, same reward. Leon looked at me, his eyes shrinking. Chris urged sharply. Why don't you do it? Do you still want to go down and retrieve the watch? So, I watched Leon, with tears on his face, take a step forward, raise his hand, and push me into the swimming pool. Chris was satisfied and let Leon leave the swimming pool. The swimming pool is two meters deep. I had to keep treading water to keep my mouth and nose above water. In the freezing cold water, I heard Chris give an order. Since Leon is gone, you will take his place to retrieve the watch. I didn't obey and just looked at him expressionlessly. Oh. Someone sneered, quite arrogant. They brought chairs and sat leisurely by the pool. If you don't fish out your watch, you can't get out of the water. They were chatting and laughing on the shore, while my body was gradually losing temperature. If we keep going like this, I'll be the first one to give up. I can't just sit there and wait for death. So, under everyone's gaze, I closed my eyes and slowly sank into the water. This move was very abrupt. Because it was closing time, only one light was on by the swimming pool. I knew that in such dim light, people on shore would never be able to accurately identify the specific location of underwater objects. In the cold water, I heard the laughter on the shores suddenly stop, followed by Chris's sneer. I want to see how long he can hold it in. Half a minute. Chris didn't take it seriously. What could possibly happen? He got an A on the swimming test, how could he drown? One minute. Chris stood up and shouted at the edge of the pool. Jack, I ordered you to come out. Do you hear me? One and a half minutes. The people on the shore were extremely anxious. Amidst the commotion, I heard someone lower his voice. Let's not talk about anything else, the live broadcast has not stopped. If those two young ladies haven't had enough fun, then we... Chris collapsed and yelled. This is not my fault. I just wanted to teach him a lesson. I lurked underwater, and under the cover of the dim lights of the swimming pool, I slowly moved towards the shore. I identified the people on the shore through the distorted waves, ready to wait for an opportunity and pull a few people down to accompany me in the cold water. Before I could make a choice, I heard a loud bang, as the water plunged into my ears. A figure suddenly dived into the water, and the surging waves stirred up countless tiny bubbles. Before I could come to my senses, the figure swam towards me quickly, grabbed my hand, and led me towards the surface of the water. Crash. There was a sound of water breaking. Emily and I came out of the water one after another. As soon as I got out of the water, Emily immediately came to my side. She pressed her whole body against me and leaned forward to feel my breath. I pushed her hand away and coughed a few times. I'm fine. Drops of water rolled down my hair and down my face like cold tears. I'm scared to death. Emily held my hand that I pushed away, her fingers trembling slightly. Your hands are frozen and have no temperature. I got goosebumps all over my body and pulled my hand back hard. Before I pulled my hand away, I heard footsteps approaching. I looked up and saw that the person coming was Sophia. She is late. At the same time, Emily looked up at Chris and the others. Although Emily was soaked, she still felt a strong and fierce sense of oppression all over her body. Chris and the others shrank and lowered their heads under her gaze. Emily's eyes finally settled on Sophia. She said coldly. Sophia, keep your dog under control. After Sophia led the others out of the swimming pool, Emily looked at me again. She placed my palm against her cheek and said with a somewhat aggrieved tone, "If I don't take the initiative to look for you, will you never look for me?" I pushed Emily. Let go. I need to go change my clothes. Winter uniforms are quite thick and feel cold and stuffy when they get wet. But she refused to let go. Emily's voice is a bit like a spoiled child because of her nasal tone. I took a history lesson today. I cursed God Jean inwardly, but had to continue listening to her rage. She said, "The teacher talked about the dramatic changes in Eastern Europe and the disintegration of the Soviet Union." Me so. She said, "The Cold War is over." Aye. The arms she held around me tightened quietly. Jack, the Cold War is over. Let's make peace. After changing into dry clothes, I looked at the time carefully and walked out of the swimming pool. Emily and Sophia were waiting for me at the gate. To be honest, I didn't expect Emily to come. I just found out that it was Leon who went to find Emily first and asked her to save me. Thinking of Leon's back as he ran out of the swimming pool, soaking wet and in a panic, I drooped my eyelashes, a little absentminded. Leon would coax me into pushing me into the pool and would also try his best to get help from me after I was out of trouble. So I don't blame him. But if I can forgive Leon, shouldn't I also forgive Emily and Sophia? At this moment, Emily saw me. She came over, tiptoed, and put the scarf around my neck. Sophia beside him also asked gently. Do you want to go to the school clinic for a checkup? I looked at them, and suddenly my eyes turned red. Emily was at a loss for a moment. What, what is this? I looked at them very seriously and said softly, "Thank you." Guang, I didn't expect. I didn't expect that you would actually come to rescue me. I know that I am a student from the countryside. I am dull, old-fashioned, and incompatible with you. In fact, I have always been afraid that you would laugh at me, dislike me, and look down on me. But, why do you have to be so nice to me? Hearing this, Emily froze in place, her expression blank for a moment. I lowered my head and placed a shy and gentle kiss on her cheek. After a moment of silence, the comments quickly went crazy. Kiss. I wrote down the date. The exact time is nineteen hours twenty-three minutes and three seconds. After watching the live broadcast for most of the semester, I actually don't hate the top students that much. He's not too timing, he's just afraid that the round-faced boy will be bullied because of the love letter. Jack is actually a nice guy. When he entered high school, he brought local specialties to his classmates, but everyone disliked them and refused to eat them, so he never brought them again. I wonder how the school director's daughter and the school beauty feel now. Will they regret making a bet with Jack? Seriously, does anyone think this strategy livestream and the prize pool are really outrageous? At this moment, the balance of public opinion finally tilted towards me. Emily was stunned for a long time before she threw herself into my arms with a blushing face. She said awkwardly. Guang, you are a very good person, no one will treat you badly. And why are you so cheesy? It's so annoying. I buried my face in Emily's hair as if embarrassed, but the corners of my mouth couldn't help but rise up. Finally waited for this scene. Forgiveness? Gratitude? Just a pretense? The only high ground a fledgling victim can occupy is the moral high ground. They approach me with malicious intent, trying to seduce me to reveal my ugly side, break my pride, and cover me in mud. But I will let them see with their own eyes my crystal-clear, unobstructed soul. I want everyone to see that their full of malice is exchanged for my flawless sincerity. When the truth comes out, who will be disgraced and who will become the biggest joke? I can hardly wait. School clinic. I finished my ginger tea and lay down on the bed to take a nap. Just as I was about to fall asleep, I heard two footsteps outside the bed curtain. Someone carefully drew aside the curtain. I heard Emily lower her voice. Shoo, he's asleep. Sophia responded softly. Yeah. Someone placed his palm on my forehead. Seeing that I didn't have a fever, they both stepped back behind the curtain. I was feeling a little awkward pretending to be asleep, and was just about to pretend to wake up when I suddenly heard Emily whisper. Guang Meow Mio, I don't want to continue that bet anymore. I have terminated the live broadcast of the forum, and I will freeze the reward pool first. I'll return this mini live camera to you. Sophia was silent for a moment. You like him? Emily admitted simply. Hmm. After the final exams, there will be Enu's school anniversary dance. I'm going to the dance, confessing to Jack. Sophia's voice trembled unnoticedly. What if he doesn't agree? Emily didn't care and said confidently. Jack even kissed me. I'm so beautiful, my family background is also excellent, and I will treat him very well in the future. Sophia interrupted him. But what if Jack already has someone in his heart? Hearing this, Emily's voice suddenly turned cold. Sophia, I know you were investigating Jack's past. No matter what you dig up, this matter ends here. Guang keeps things in his stomach that he shouldn't say. In exchange, the Bai family can start preparing for the West City project. After finishing the last exam of the semester, I walked out of the examination room. Emily was waiting for me in the corridor. Seeing me come out, she hurriedly put the scribbled manuscript in her hand into her pocket, then came towards me with a smile. Before I could say anything, the girl started talking like pouring beans. Guang Xu had done everything he could do. I wrote down the words I knew for the big questions that I didn't know how to answer and also copied the questions again. I'm sure I'll pass. Emily said with sparkling eyes. You said before that if I can pass the math exam in the final exam, you will grant me a wish. Does this still count? Seeing me nod, she giggled and said, "Then I want you to go back to the villa with me." I finally invited my dad stylist to come here today. You're welcome. In the afternoon, Emily handed me over to the styling consultant and ran away with a red face. She said she wanted to keep suspense for the dance party in the evening. Makeup, dress up. I was tormented for the entire afternoon, and then the old butler drove me to the door of the hall where the ball was held. Tonight, the first snow fell. As I got out of the car in a haute couture suit, the bell on the auditorium tower rang. It was seven o'clock in the evening and the ball was about to begin. Everything was just right, as if it was destined. I ignored the surprised looks around me and just walked up the stairs towards the auditorium. At the solemn and classical door of the auditorium, I saw Sophia in a jet-black dress. She held the champagne in one hand and looked at me with a smile. You are different tonight. I said, "Thank you." Sophia seemed to have drunk a lot of wine. Her breath was slightly panting and her cheeks were flushed. She stared at me and said abruptly, "I'm sorry." I was stunned, my expression puzzled. Why apologize? Sophia whispered, "For everything." I stared at Sophia for a long time, until she looked away in embarrassment, and then I chuckled. I said, "Sophia, you have nothing to be sorry for. That time at Guangnae Auditorium, I sent you the location and you rushed there as soon as possible, didn't you? As for what you said to me before... I know, you just want to scare me and get an answer from me." Sophia shook her head sadly. This answer no longer made sense. Come on in, she has a surprise for you. She stepped aside to let me into the auditorium. When I passed by her, I secretly pinched myself twice, and my cheeks suddenly turned slightly red. I smiled shyly and whispered to Sophia. You asked me if I came to Enu's college because of that person. I want to tell you, at least, it used to be. There are not many truths in this world, but the boy's blush is better than a long confession. Having said that, I walked away without hesitation. Behind him, someone whispered, "Did goddess Sophia not hold the champagne properly?" As I walked into the auditorium, the lights slowly dimmed. Amid everyone's exclamations, the lights on the auditorium stage came on. Emily appeared on the stage wearing a pearly-white haute couture floor-length dress and a sparkling rose brooch on her chest. Her bangs were solemnly combed back, making her look dignified and noble. Emily took the pole mic and spoke softly. Recently, I often dream about a person. He was studying hard, he was a hero saving a beautiful girl, and even when I was irritated and made him frown while explaining the problem. Everything about him deeply attracted me, and I couldn't help but fall in love with him. The passionate love in her words made the audience excited, and some people were so moved that they covered their mouths. At the same time, several spotlights were cast on me at the same time. Emily stared at me across the crowd. The flower language of Freud's rose is, you shuttle through my dreams carelessly, turning my heart into a fragrant garden. You have been wandering in my dreams for too long. Now, can you please come to me? Guang Jack, I like you. Will you be my boyfriend? At the same time, rose petals were flying all over the sky, interweaving into a beautiful dreamlike scene. My classmates' envious or encouraging eyes urged me to agree to her quickly. I blinked and spoke nervously. I. Sizzle. Before I could finish my words, a sharp sound of electricity suddenly filled the entire auditorium. At the same time, the huge screens on the four walls of the ballroom began to flash and play pictures. Act one. At the corner of the stairs, Emily looked at my back as I left, frowned, and snorted in annoyance. How can I win over Guang, this country bumpkin, if he doesn't agree to take extra lessons? Wait until I ruin his part-time job, and I'll see if he dares to refuse me. Scene switch, act two. Emily played with a Freud rose, her tone excited and frivolous. She gave me flowers. Just wait and see. It will take three days to win. The scene switches again, act three. Jack, don't regret it when you leave this room today. The picture was shaking constantly, and the person filming it was smashing things in anger. Who the hell does Guang think he is? How dare he show disdain to me? This low-class fellow who is fickle-minded. Once I get him and win the bet, I won't be named Yeen if I don't destroy him. Quickly flashing images, malicious words, and disgusting comments. Under everyone's gaze, my face gradually turned pale. Emily on the stage was stunned, then she started to yell in a sharp voice. Turn it off, turn it off! But all her anger disappeared instantly when she saw the self-deprecating smile on my face. Emily's expression was blank for a moment, then she strode towards me. Jack, it's not what you see. I can explain. I took a half step back. Don't come over here. One action says it all. At the same time, Sophia walked out of the crowd and stopped in front of me. She lifted her skirt, looking very elegant. Emily, he told you not to come over here. Emily looked at her, her expression becoming increasingly gloomy. Guang? Is it you? You're the one behind these live streams, aren't you? Sophia didn't answer, but emphasized again. Emily, he rejected you. This time, Emily responded with a slap in the face. Amid everyone's exclamations, Emily knocked Sophia to the ground. We've been friends for so many years, and you know how much I like him. Sophia covered her swollen face and fell on the carpet in embarrassment, but there was a smile on her face. But you know, as long as I tell you that. Emily pulled Sophia's hair hard. Shut up. Her tone was cold and her expression was fierce. Guang Sophia, your family has so many illegitimate children. If I fall out with the Bai family, you will be immediately kicked out of the position of Bai family heir. As they fought each other, the video on four large screens continued to play. The screen changes to a voting collection interface. Emily's excited voice sounded in the background. Guang Meow Meow, let's set up a live broadcast prize pool. All rewards for the strategy live broadcast will go into this prize pool. Everyone can place a bet. Let's bet on when that country bumpkin will give his first kiss. At the same time, a huge jackpot accumulated amount appeared on the screen. Five million. The names of all those involved in this live gambling game flashed by, like a grand public execution. The auditorium was so silent that you could almost hear a pin drop. At this moment, Sophia's smile finally froze. She murmured to herself, I didn't do this. The betting time of the final winner appears on the screen. Nineteen hours twenty-three minutes and three seconds. There were suppressed whispers from the crowd. Someone breathed a sigh of relief. It's so embarrassing, luckily, I didn't place the bet at that time. Some people find it unbelievable. Guang, it's a bit scary, the time is exactly right? Whose vote is this? At the same time, the final suspense was revealed and the winner's name appeared on the screen. Jack. My name. Countless eyes were cast towards me, and I stood under the spotlight, finally revealing a sincere smile. Emily and Sophia looked ashen. They looked at me in surprise. Jack? I smiled and nodded to them. I accept the loss, and remember to deposit the winnings into my bank account.